To reiterate, since we started the recording late, we have a quorum, just taking a roll call. And I just want to update all present that last night we held a public hearing on zoning bylaw changes to be submitted to special town meeting on June 11th. Planning board received a lot of valuable input from the public. Last night we closed the public input portion of the hearing. And the planning board subsequently went into the deliberation portion. The deliberation portion was suspended last night due to the late hour. Tonight, we will be continuing the deliberation portion of the public hearing. Bear with me while I read this into the record. The public hearing notice has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket. See if the town will amend the general bylaws to include sections regulating junk cars, curb cuts, and the allowance of commercial and landscaping material, the storage of boats in the setback and stormwater management. These regulations are moving from the zoning bylaws with minor modifications. To see if the town will amend the zoning bylaws as follows, delete sections 8.5 junk cars, delete section 6.15 stormwater management special permit, delete section six curb cuts, delete sections one through four and replace them with section one, purpose and authority, section two definitions, section three districts, and section four use regulations in their entirety to provide greater clarity to add definition to insert a table of uses, to allow swimming pools by right, provided they meet zoning criteria, and to clarify specified allowed uses and accessory uses. Delete section seven administrative and delete section seven blank and add a new section 12 administration. To clarify administrative requirements, add a section about review of Dover amendment cases, add a section about reasonable accommodations, and define the makeup and the role of the planning board. Delete section 6.1 nonconforming use and we add a new section seven nonconforming uses that revises and expands regulations to allow more flexibility in approving modifications of reuses of properties that are not in compliance with zoning regulations by allowing the zoning board of appeals greater discretion, allowing nonconforming uses that are less detrimental to the town and make this section consistent with case law. Delete section six special provisions and replace it with a new section six special provision to renumber the section. Remove redundant sections, create a comprehensive set of special permits and site plan review standards, change special permit and site review regulations to performance based regulations where possible. Make other modifications, delete site plan and special permit requirement in compliance with case law and change stormwater regulations to reference those in the general bylaw. Delete section 9.2 residential conversion conservation cluster and replace it with a new section 9.2 reservation residential conservation cluster to remove the minimum lot size for residential conservation clusters and specify density bonuses for deeded affordability, open space, or town amenities. Amend the table of uses in section four to add senior housing by special permit in all districts. Add section 9.3 senior housing to provide regulations that allow by special permit the development and use of alternative housing and nursing care for seniors and to create healthcare, housing, and other supportive services for the senior population in all districts. Add section 8.6 adult entertainment establishments to provide regulations of said establishments by special permit of the zoning board of appeals. Replace section 9.1 special housing provisions with a new section 9.1 accessory dwelling units in a single residential district, in single residence districts. This section will reduce the area needed for this use, require that the use be attached to a primary residence, require registration of the units with the building inspector, allow the building inspector to issue permits for this use and when they comply with regulations. New units that do not meet the criteria will require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. The number of accessory dwelling units will be capped at 20 per year and existing units will be grandfathered. Two more, delete accessory use number seven as part of an existing garage, stable, or other existing structure, family living quarters for an employee of the owner slash occupant from the table of uses in section four. And modify accessory use number six accessory dwelling unit in the table of uses in section four to Y slash ZBA in residential districts A, B, C, E, and the general district. I now would like to have a motion to continue the deliberation, to open and continue the deliberation portion of the public hearing.
Excuse me, so moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Foley? Ms. Foley?
Sorry, yes, 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 yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Olney?
Yes.
Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, 6-0 to open the continuation of deliberations. At this time, I would like to have vice chair Sarah Creighton lead with the topics that still need to be vetted and voted.
Okay, can I share?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, no problem. So, welcome, everybody. A little bit hard to figure out what exactly we need, what we, how exactly to proceed tonight, so hopefully I've got it right. The, talked, I talked to Greg and what he wants to have us do is, instead of having, well, first of all, I think everybody picked up a packet, right? Did, did everybody get a chance to get that? Okay, that was, except for the Article two somehow didn't get copied, so we'll talk about that one using the screen. So we're going to refer to this packet, the line numbers. And as we talk. Greg does not want to put this entire missive in as the article. He wants to have the short, have the articles be a short summary similar to the public notice that Ron just read. And then the packet that we have before us is actually not articles, but is motions. Alan, does that make sense to you? I knew you were busy this afternoon, so I didn't bug you. It's he on?
I think Alan's on. Alan, you're on the?
I'm sorry, Sarah, I was, I was out of the room while Ron was reading the notice.
Oh, well, that's okay. So, so the example is that the article would be to see if the town, I put an example here. See, the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws and replace them in section one, two, three, through four for purposes of blah, blah, blah. And then the motion would be, I move to amend the zoning bylaws sections one, two, three, four, and replace them with new sections as follows. And that would be the handout at, people would, at town meeting would have that handout. Greg said we needed to approve our final motions concurrent with approving the articles and make the motions available on the website and at town hall.
I agree with all of that except, except for concurrent. I don't think you need to have, you, you need to have the articles to the board of selectmen so that they can vote to approve them at their meeting on the 24th. The, the motions don't need to accompany them necessarily. They could come later.
Oh, good. Okay. All right, so.
But I, I'd like, I would like to reserve on that answer just to be, just to check with Greg. I don't think he's on this call, is he?
No, that's fine. I think that's fine for tonight. Okay, so we're.
Does the, does the FinCom have to also endorse?
Only if there are financial implications for the town, meaning, I mean, they're, they're required to comment on articles with financial implications, not financial implications in terms of growth of property values or whatever, but financial implications, meaning expenditures or potential expenditures.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I think our strategy remains the same. It means that our motions could still get proofread in a few extra days. But I think our, my goal here is to, next Monday is to have, the article can certainly get approved. And I'd like tonight to kind of move things to their near final conclusion. So I think we can be a little shorter tonight than.
The, the hand, we should talk a bit about how to inform the voters. If, if this is an appropriate time to do that.
Sure, we can do that. Let me stop sharing for a second. Greg and I actually talked about a, an idea there, so. Do you have a, do you want to?
And Greg and I have talked too. What, what's the most recent?
Okay. So Greg and I, we first suggested, he suggested sort of a pamphlet, like, like the table that we have on the website or some version of that. And then today I said to him, why don't we send a postcard that has a link to the website? We can have the motions there on the website and also a town hall. And we could also make a, we could take the video of the public hearing, cut out the public comment, and people could watch that fascinating road show. And, or it might be faster just to make a new one, but nonetheless, some version of that. And so that was the, that was what, that was the latest that we came up with.
Okay, okay.
And then postcard will go to all postal customers.
I think that's, that's good. I think the handout that needs to be available at town meeting should contain the, the motions with all of their detail. In other words, word for word, the changes that are going to be adopted. So that if people want to propose amendments, and are you going to have line, line numbers?
So. I should have dropped off a packet with you, for you. But yes, we will get you a packet.
Okay, great. So people will have in their hands the actual language of the amendments. Go ahead.
The other thing that Greg and I talked a little bit about is that town meeting, whether or not, rather than doing slides, because then you run the risk of people not being able to read them or see them, is to take really the, the most, the most confusing ones are the nonconforming use residential cluster, senior housing, and ADUs, and take the tables that we showed in our presentation, make sure they're correct, make any edits to them that are necessary, and include them with the motions to, to try to summarize those motions.
So this, what would be on the screen would be the summary.
He suggested not even using the screen, but simply having it be paper.
Well, I think those tables could probably, we have, I believe we have the capability to toggle between a presentation from the planning board and the voting software.
Right. So we can kind of technically table that.
Let me finish. So, so if we can do that, I think those tables are pretty explanatory and, and would be visible. We're going to be testing the, the, the video capability on, I think it's Wednesday of next week. And so if you, if you could have even just dummy slides available to do that, that we could toggle between, we can see if that'll actually be visible, but I think that might be helpful.
Okay. I think we have, we can chat text, test that next week and then make a final determination. So.
Did I include you in the emails on the, on the time for that?
Yes, I'm going to be unavailable, but Ron's going to go.
I'm going to go. I'll try to get the, you know, some drivers, the slides. I hope that'll work.
So, um, to this end, I would like to take a motion to authorize Chris and Sue and me to just design a postcard to go to all voters. As we've done with presentations, we'll put a draft up for everyone to see, make comments. It'll be very simple, pointing people to the website and work to get it to all postal customers. So I, I'll take a motion for that.
I'll move. There's a second?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in, Ron?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
And I'll vote, yeah. Gary, sorry.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, great. Um, great, thank you, Alan. So I think we have concurrence that there is, that we're going to, so if there's, so the article, I think everybody knows the difference. An article is the, advises the town what the topic is going to be, and the motion is the actual procedural vote. So that's the example. So, so the packet that you have today in front of you describes everything as an article. So, you know, in your, you can take each of those and change it from article to motion. And it should say, I vote, I, I'm looking at article, proposed article five, just, I, I move that to amend. You know, okay, so pretend that that's what they all say. All right. The other thing is that the article numbers that I have put in this packet are my art, our article numbers. We don't know for sure if there will be another article or two before or after. If they're before, then all of ours shift by one number. So for tonight's purposes, we're going to use the numbering that is in the packet, recognizing that that numbering might change in the final town meeting warrant. All right, makes sense?
Alan has his hand rings.
Oh, Alan, go ahead.
Thanks, Sarah. The, the packet that I have, which I got from Sharon today at town hall, doesn't have numbers for the articles. That, am I behind a step there?
Doesn't have article numbers? What did you get?
Well.
In the cover page?
Right.
Oh, I didn't give them the college page.
Oh, it should start with, um, sections, oh, sections one through four doesn't have an article number. If you go to the next one.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
I haven't had it, it was very helpful of Sharon to give it to me today, and I appreciate that. I haven't had a chance to look at it other than the first page, so.
Yeah, okay, so it's the, yep, the first one doesn't have the article number, everything else does. It should be in the footer, actually.
There, there will, there will only be one other article, as I understand it. And that is a, a friendly taking of land on loading place road for affordable housing purposes. I don't know if the selectmen even talked about where to place the articles. My, my hunch is they'll probably put that first, but I, I don't know that for sure.
Yep. And in the packet that you got today, everybody, the Article two is not included, so we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute. Was that going to be your point, Laura?
I mistakenly thought Article three and four were also not included, but I see they're printed on the backside of a page, so.
Yep, okay.
The Article two.
So tonight, we're going to, I'm hoping we can create a final version of the substantive changes by Friday night, if we can have any proof typos and so forth. The final versions, I'll try to get on before Sunday on SharePoint, although this new note, new information that the motions don't have to be finalized by Monday, except if we have to finalize them subsequently, we'd need another meeting. So let's try to do them Monday. You know, that's the other issues, like we got to post another meeting if we don't do them Monday. So let's try to get them done Monday. Um, so in, on Monday, I envision motions to ask the town to pass, to advance as written the articles that we're going to, that will be dated May 23rd, and that we have a motion to approve any remaining, basically any motions for town meeting. I don't think we'll get them final tonight. Um, so, let's dig in here to the outstanding issues. If you have typos, please, let's not spend our time tonight on typos, please. You can email me them if there are a few, if there are a lot, which I'm sure there are, you know, lunch, please, let's give me the paper copy so that I can, it's much easier for me to deal with a paper copy at this stage, even if I have 10, 10 copies, I consolidate them and then I'll put them in, or I'll have Pauline do that, or somebody do that. So, but it seems to me that we didn't hear any changes on sections on Article one, which is sections one through four. Article, I've skipped over Article two, Article three. I propose that we add language that said, provided that Article, whatever the number is, is approved to amend the general bylaws on related topics, or some such language. I need to, I just added that in. I, Greg and I were, and Sharon were talking today, and there is some risk that if the AG didn't approve that general bylaws change, then we'd be stuck. So the, the thought was just add a provision on those deletions that the general bylaws would be amended. That is the Article two. Article two is to amend the general bylaws.
Sarah, I have questions with Article one.
Okay, um, great. Why don't we come back to that? Go ahead.
Um, so.
Can I, sorry, before you start, Mary, sorry. If you have, if you can, if we have questions, if you have suggestions, if, it would be great if you can make them as motions, but, but certainly if you have questions, go for it.
Well, yeah, maybe a question becomes a motion. I don't know. Um, I don't see a definition for commercial vehicle.
So then there isn't a definition for commercial vehicle. I believe a commercial vehicle is a regulatory, you have a commercial plate, right?
Well, I believe it's in our, our use table, so I think we're defining it in some way. The parking of a, one commercial vehicle. So are we going with a state definition?
There is a state definition.
Yeah, I mean.
Under Mass.
Go. What's the state definition?
Let me try to get it for you one moment here. The Mass Department of Transportation defines commercial vehicles requiring commercial plates as any motor vehicle, which is not a private passenger motor vehicle, antique motorcar, motorcycle, trailer, semi-trailer, auto home, house trailer, taxi cab, ambulance, horse, or livery vehicle. And I'm not saying 2017, so I'd want to make sure I had the most up to date. This is just a quick check. But it looks like there ought to be a state definition that we can refer to.
So it has to have a commercial plate?
According to this first reference I found.
Okay, all right, I'll look that up. So, so it looked sounding like ambulances and things like that. So I, I just.
Sorry, Mary, ambulances were not included in this. So any motor vehicle which is not dot, dot, dot ambulance, et cetera.
Okay, okay. So I do think we should have a definition, but you know, if others don't, that's fine. Um, I did that thought, we had the, the discussion of taking out the definitions that we don't actually have anything for. So there must have been a discussion to keep them in that I missed.
We had a discussion. I, we did not have a resolution to remove them. We did not have a, we did not move or, you know, did not have a vote to remove them. So if you want to make a motion to remove them, and then we can figure out which ones they are, we can do that.
I thought I had sent you a list of those.
You probably did. I'm sure you did. We also added in a bunch too. So, um, it's my opinion that it doesn't hurt to have them, because in the future, they were obviously came from Mark Bobrowski's experience with various, I assume that's where they came from. They predate me, this, this list mostly, so.
Okay, um, so moving on from definitions, if we go to.
One, actually on definitions, what were we going to add something about solar as a definition?
Um, I looked at that, um, solar, we have a section on solar in 11, and I didn't see definitions that made sense to move forward. So I, I kind of, that was not, we didn't agree to that. That was just a comment from John.
Comment from the public.
I think we're.
Okay. Go ahead, Mary, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Um, so section 4.3.2 residential accessory use is 4.3.2.1. The borders in a single family dwelling, and I think it's clear, it's more clearly defined in the use table, but somehow the, with common cooking facilities and living facilities was taken out.
Okay.
So does that get added in, or do I need to make?
Should get out of it. Shouldn't, I don't know how it could add. Um, can that, can you add that back in for me and put it in a, um,
Yeah, no.
Somebody, I guess I'll do it. Sorry. Okay, um, hold on. 4.3 point.
Two.
Two. Point one.
And what line number? That would be helpful. That's why we have the line numbers, right?
Uh, the guarantee number.
Line five, 2516.
Yeah, it starts at 516. I, um.
Edit it to the end of 518, no?
Yeah, it's 516 to 518.
Yep.
I don't know exactly where in the sentence you'd want to add it back in. Let me see.
Kind of. So.
Is the, what, what we had simply said, the taking of borders or the leasing of room for not more than four persons by a family residing on the premises with common cooking and living facilities, providing there are no signs or display to advertise.
So right here, we have, why is that not changing? Or, sorry, I'm trying to make sure I track change so you can see. Uh, track change.
There you go.
With.
With.
Common cooking facilities and living facilities. Think the whole sentence.
By the owner. Oh, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
A single family dwelling shall be permitted. Don't we want to get rid of that? Or is not more than four persons, single family dwelling with common cooking and living facilities shall be a permitted accessory use. I don't need those, comma, I guess I do.
Yeah, and what we currently have, so I think you want this clarity, is that by a family residing on the premises. You do want an owner occupied.
Yeah, okay.
Just, just a small point. There, there is a substantive change you're making there by deleting by the owner occupant thereof. Because if, if a house, if a single family dwelling were rented, you would, you, only, under the existing language, only the owner occupant would be allowed to have borders. By deleting that language, you're allowing a tenant of a single family dwelling to have borders.
Right.
But current bylaw states that it has to be with the family residing at the.
That is quite different than what we have now.
No. I don't think we, well, I'll speak for myself, but I think it would be a hard sell to say have renters take then borders.
Right, so now we have, so right now, we're, what I'm proposing here is the renting of rooms or furnishing aboard for not more than four persons in a single family dwelling with common cooking and living facilities shall be permitted use by the, provided the owner occupant lives on the premises.
Sarah, why don't you just say borders in a owner occupied, single family dwelling?
Yep, all right, thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
There's something else on the same page when you're done. There's something else on the same page when you're done.
Owner is misspelled, owner occupied.
Okay.
I, I don't know why I'm interfering in this conversation because it's really not my role.
Please.
I'm gonna mute myself.
No, no, okay, go on, Mary.
Uh, so F.
Uh, sorry, owner occupied should be hyphenated, just to make that clear. Thank you.
Um, where it says any swimming pools that do not satisfy the above criteria A through E.
Mm-hmm. Yep, thank you.
Um. And then jumping to the use table.
Okay, let me just change the state. Okay.
Um. My question, well, I have a bunch of questions on this, but my one first question is, we don't have senior housing on here, yet we have other items that haven't been voted on yet either. So.
So did you read the senior housing by law says to add a lot a row?
Okay, okay. Um, so then under.
And just to clear, just to follow up on that accessory dwelling units, this one right here, multi-family dwellings with more, no, 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 where's accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, that's.
It's seven, it's seven here.
It's E six.
Uh, E six, yep. Oh, it's, okay, that's good because it's seven on the, it's seven in the, in the amendment. So the amendment on that accessory dwelling unit says to, just so you know, says to see if the town will delete accessory use number seven, so it should be number six. Um, as part of the, as part of an existing garage stable, blah, blah, blah. From the table of uses.
Well, that's a different thing, Sarah, I think.
No, it's to delete it from this table of uses.
Oh, is it on this table uses?
Yeah, right here, accessory dwelling unit.
Go down and see what number seven is.
That's what?
That's number seven.
There it is, number seven.
Ah, okay, and then we actually have to modify that one too. Oh, yeah, I did say that number six, modify number six. Yep, sorry. I'm smart, and I think I might look. All right.
You're smarter than you think.
Yep. I also, this is highlighted because I thought it should probably be a note, but then I ran out of steam. Does that have to renumber all? Um. These two, okay, all right, Mary, I, um, these are highlighted because I wanted to check them. I see those as ministerial, those things, just to go back, go to section eleven and make sure I got them right. That's why they're highlighted.
Uh, so D nine. His nose across the board. I'm questioning, why do we have it in there?
I assume we have it in there because it was specified in section four previously.
I believe that is the one that we took out. Is that the one that we took out?
Oh, right, you're right, we did.
So we should remove that. We should have, yeah.
Yep.
It's gonna mess up the numbering.
I know. I actually want to remove the numbers.
That may be why we didn't take it out.
That's not a good reason. So I have to renumber the, no, I don't have to remember those. Okay.
Um, a, a quick question with the D, D two and three, um, and I'm sure we talked about it, but the doctor's office, I mean, why wouldn't we have yeses in the limited commercial district for that? I know it says no more than three, but I would assume you could have.
I think any use in the, um, the LCD requires uh, some sort of special permit.
Yeah, but then it should be PB or ZBA.
Okay, let's check that.
Um. Uh, D thirteen, under limited commercial district, I, currently that falls under the planning board.
Yeah, I told you, I said I have to fix, I have to check those because I have them all.
Okay.
Add them all those and I, I, um. So I, I, we need to check those three.
Okay. Um, E. Eight. I feel like I'm playing bingo.
I know.
Um, E eight. We don't currently allow. Um, so it says customary home occupation conducted in a dwelling or building accessory. Our current, well, at least my old current four point one point eight says you can't. You don't have the same, you can't do the same things in an accessory dwelling unit you can do in the primary.
No, it says you can.
That doesn't say an accessory dwelling, it says, or building accessory there too.
Right. And then note fourteen is provided no disposable, visible display of goods from the street, no exterior advertising, such a sign within two feet square, provides such oxidation, I mean, care, provided. And as, and provided such occupation shall not be carried on in an accessory building. So, I think Mary's right. Note contradicts our table. So.
Did that, did that, yeah, did that come directly out of?
Yeah, that came directly out of our, our initial, original bylaw. We might want to change that, but let's, let's be true to our, at least for a moment, to our, and then say, do we care if it's an accessory? Do we want to keep the? I would be inclined to, we've sort of represented that we're not changing things, so I would be inclined to keep it as we have in, in our current.
I think we just, it seems to me that we discussed that and said, why wouldn't you want it in a, and where wouldn't you want to be able to do that in your garage if you? Let's just consider.
Something like that has to be very highlighted and especially surrounding the ADU conversation. I, I don't recall ever saying that that, we were going that direction.
Yeah, I don't specifically recall it, but I don't know why we would change it.
So I think that we could change it in the future. I guess I feel like at this point that is a change and one, one of the things that I learned last night from Sarah was that, you know, an M, a garage or a shed in the back, it's on the setbacks, is not a problem to the neighbors. You start having your, um, office with people coming and going there, maybe people would, it becomes a little bit a different use, and in some instances might be considered to be, you know, more of a nuisance or something. Alan, you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, s- thank you, Sarah. I, I'm just wondering if, um, you're going to be addressing topics that I should continue to be on for.
I don't think, we're gonna be nitpicking this stuff. We're gonna be nitpicking this stuff.
So I, I, I have to tell you, I am overwhelmingly impressed by the level of detail that you guys are going into in i- i- in, in addressing all these things and with such a comprehensive approach. I'm glad I'm not on the planning board, frankly. But I, I, I want to thank you all for the, for the attention and, uh, uh, detailed examination you're giving to all these changes. It's, it's just great.
Thanks. Thanks for all your help and support.
Okay, anything I can do, let me know, but I'm going to sign off then.
Um, do I have any motion to leave the accessory use in, or should we leave it at, or, or one way or the other? I guess I will make, I'm going to ask for a motion to strike it in being consistent with our existing by, by law. Does anybody?
Before we do, I want to read you.
Okay.
By law, four point one point nine.
All right.
This, I knew there was something about this accessory use on the same lot with and customerly incident to any of the above permitted uses. Or to have the uses permitted in accordance with the following section, and not detrimental to a neighborhood, presidential neighborhood. Uh, that would be allowed.
Chris, then it specifies the, um, that gets back into that ADU, like the stable or the garage or?
Well, it's a whole bunch of things, yeah, not just that. Well, the garaging, oh, maybe, yeah, never mind, never mind.
It's a mess, that's why we need the table.
I think Mary is right.
It's just too complicated to figure out.
I think it's the perfect and the good.
I'll say, I'll second it.
Okay, let's, uh, strike this. Any other discussion? Um, all right, all in favor, Mary?
Yes.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Okay, on we go.
Don't forget Gary.
Gary, sorry, Gary, you don't have your face on my screen.
Two times, Sarah. Yes.
I have four boxes and it doesn't have you, sorry. Just yell at me, okay? Other things, Mary, on four?
That's it for now.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go back, oh, wait, let me just save this because if I.
Oh, you had some question marks in the use table though as well.
They need to get, um, those to get just, um, but their date. Um, and, uh, those can get just referenced back. Maybe you can help me with that. Um. Uh. Okay, sorry. Reason I'm dating these, trying to make sure I'm dating them carefully is that we're now going to start mo- uh, so it's May thirteenth, this, on, uh, eighteenth versions. Oh, it's the May eighteenth version, actually.
Hmm.
Okay. Um, yeah, with the, so.
I did, I did have one other quick question. You know, under four point three point two, we seem to have dropped off some of the residential accessory uses. I'm just wondering why.
Enter your participant ID, followed by town.
Is that here, or who's?
Not me.
It's, it's someone calling in on a phone.
I'm trying to find where we had it, but we had other, we, um.
Mary, I think. Sorry.
They all end up in the table.
Yeah, I think they are in the table. I just didn't know.
And that was.
Consistent, but.
I think we updated some of the language of accessory uses just to make it more broad and to make it more current because there were things like millinery and um, those type of uses. I think we just updated it, but I think it broadly captures all of those type of things.
Okay.
Okay, um. So the ninth version plus the check of the wind and solar, um, and any administrative, we're going to vote all these again as, once I give you a final packet. I just want to know that we're, that we've got agreement that we're moving ahead. Um. Article four, which is, so article three, as I said, is to remove the zoning changes that would be subsumed by the general bylaws. We haven't talked about the general bylaws ones yet. Article four is to renumber seven to twelve and six point one to seven. And section six, um, I know I need to delete the little stray voltage there on line thirty six. Um, but is there any other changes? Um, and Mark Bobrowski noted a, um, line ninety eight should be section six point three. Um, but are there any other changes to, uh, section six? Um, hearing, uh, Laura, go ahead.
Yeah, I gotta find mine. It was minor, but it was having to do with view sheds. Just a clarification.
Oh, did you send me that?
Yes, once, the, the majority's in section twelve, but there's also a small addition of a couple of words in.
To continue.
Okay, uh, I might have, let me just.
You are in the meeting now. There are six participants.
All right, can some, uh, let's see, Ron, do you have control here?
He was, he was, I think he just muted.
Yeah.
I just muted that person.
Thanks, Ron. Uh, I can find it again quickly.
Yeah, I know, and I thought I copied all that stuff in. Uh, maybe I skipped that one, I'm sorry.
Okay, it was, um, minor and quick, just.
Okay.
A moment, I'll pull it up.
I'm sorry, I thought I. Sorry, I'm scrolling around here. Okay, section six, if you can give me the line number.
Uh, I will try to do that just a moment. Okay.
Oh, you know what?
Six point three point seven is the section. And what is line number?
That's right.
Three point seven. Okay, um, under site development standards. Where the heck is this gone? Sorry, I was looking, maybe I'm looking at a prior section six and it's been numbered. Sorry, Sarah, let me, let me just.
I'm gonna pull this out. Um, I'm gonna give all this to you, Sharon, at the end of this. So. And, um, I was wrong about that line ninety eight. That was in a different section.
Find it when you're ready.
Okay, yep.
Line two thirty five. Under site development standards, I'm adding a couple of words about view sheds. So currently it says, um, to preserve and enhance scenic points. Add the words and view sheds. And I'm looking at the comments from the letter we received, um, asking for consideration to strengthen view sheds. So I've done that there. And one other place in section twelve when we get there. I think a scenic point is different from a view shed.
Yep, okay, um.
So it would come after scenic points, enhanced scenic points. New word, and you should.
Okay.
You should, plural. Thanks.
Great, okay, great, thank you. Um. The other, uh, article, and then article eight, adult entertainment, I didn't hear any changes on that. So we've got, um.
I have, I have something.
Okay.
If I can, I'm sorry, what is article, which article is it again?
Eight, adult entertainment.
Um.
And that one does not have a footer on that one. I'm sorry, I will put that on.
So in the use table, it says the special granting authority is the planning board, and in the article, it says it's the Board of Appeals.
Uh, okay. I think we thought, you flagged that before and it didn't get, make it in. I think it should be the planning board, don't you think?
Correct.
Right, excellent, good catch, good catch there. Okay, article, um, so.
So it's, it's listed a couple of times in the article. Do you have the line numbers?
Yes, please.
Uh, line twenty nine.
Yep.
And line thirty three.
Uh. Okay. Okay. So I, oh, sorry. All right. Sorry about that. Um. So, um, I'd just like to take a motion to move what is currently numbered as article one, three, four, uh, eight and six, uh, as amendment to indicate, let me, let me change that to indicate, um, our intention to move these to final article and to final motions. One, three, four, eight and six as amendment, as amended. So we will come back, we will have a final on these, but, um, I just want to kind of formally say we're going to move these to the, to the town meeting articles and motion, and, uh, final motions.
So I'll move that we move articles one, three, four and eight.
And six.
And six. You wanna say with, with the event, with the changes? Shown in this document?
Yep, to sort of indicate our intent to, and we intend, can I just say that we intend?
With the, how about with the intention?
Yep.
Finalizing them for town meeting.
Sarah, this is a typo on the section six, I can help you with.
Yep. Just send it to me by...
Actually, just in your slide, I just wanted to clarify.
Oh, okay, yep.
So after scenic points, add the words and view sheds. So delete to add and replace with and.
Great, thanks, okay, all right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, any other further discussion, Mary?
We haven't discussed article three, or I'm sorry, I'm looking at article two.
What is our? Article three is just to delete the sections out of the zoning bylaw.
And so article three...
Will come after we move the... So article, the reason I, the reason we're taking, the reason I have article two in here is because you don't have a copy of it. So I'm trying to just deal with things that you copy, I was trying to think of a simple way to do it, I guess I messed it up. Three needs to, so what I did is I thought about, this is important, I thought about what article, and Chris and I talked about this, which article, what order we needed to take things in. To make sure that... If something fails, there's like a fallback position, so you don't wanna remove something from the bylaw until you've put it in the general bylaw. So, that's why... We could do the general bylaws, one is number one, and then articles one through four, I don't know. But it needs to be, and the removal of the sections from the zoning bylaw needs to be before those sections come up for revision. Does that make sense?
Sure, so, so we'll talk about article two at another time.
We're gonna get to it later.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, any other discussion here? Ron? Move to vote? You vote yes? Thank you, Chris?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gary?
Affirmative.
All right, and I vote yes, all right, so... Thank you. So this, I received some proposed suggestions from Laura, I think they all, I personally think they add... Good additions, so I put them all in a proposed motion. The motion is to add the language in yellow to the section twelve, May thirteenth version. Which is, you can read it, social economic community needs, which are served by the proposal, if appropriate, and that we would change the punctuation there. Whether seen, and then add another criteria there, whether scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated. It's a good performance standard, oops, sorry. And then to section twelve point five point four, conditions requirement of sturdy bond and security, if appropriate. Twelve point five, add when appropriate, the Board of Appeals and so forth. And then I really like this one, referral to staff members of those agencies for comments, shall be required in all instances. And I think I was supposed to make...
These actually came from Sarah Melish.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I think some of them came from, okay, Laura?
Yeah, those are actually not my words, I had different words. If you would like to hear them, I can read them, they're short.
Oh, what's the document that I got, okay.
I don't know.
In contrast to this?
They're a little different, I can read it and see if it works for people. And also I'm proposing, you're adding a number eight, I'm proposing to insert between... So let's see, should we talk about, so this is section twelve?
Five point two, first.
Okay, twelve point five point two, in between five, which addresses national natural environment, and six, which addresses fiscal impact. I was going to insert a point that said, preservation enhancement or creation of existing and proposed scenic view sheds. Again, this is where I'm trying to insert a stronger language around protecting scenic view sheds. Preservation, comma, enhancement, comma... Or creation of existing... And proposed scenic view sheds.
Do we need to divine scenic woodshed, in our definitions? Do you know what that means?
Yeah, I can, I can get you a definition in a moment.
Okay.
So the, the number eight that I added there was a comment from the public, or in a letter that we got this week.
So if you're trying to follow along here, we're in section... One oh two, one oh three. So we don't need both of these, right?
No, we can take out eight.
Okay.
I can give you a definition of a view shed? The natural environment that is visible from one or more viewing points.
Do we need to add that to our definitions?
I don't, I don't know, I mean, that's a commonly available. I don't think you need it.
No, okay, and this is gonna be, I'm gonna insert after... Five and renumber. Okay. Great, thank you, sorry, I didn't, I thought I had your stuff. Okay, and then extra section twelve point five point four, appropriate, and then appropriate, and staff member, I think I was supposed to add those earlier. Any other comments there?
So, can I, so is a lawn considered a view shed?
Lawn can be part of a view shed.
I think like anything, it's a, you know, it's a view corridor, and scenic is a qualitative descriptor, but I think that it's within the jurisdiction of the board and others to decide what scenic means, I mean, I think it's, there's some common... There's some common understanding of that, but like other criteria would be at the board's jurisdiction.
I think scenic views are enjoyed by the public, not just for one person's enjoyment, or...
I agree.
That's one.
So I'm just trying to marry these two, because the one that the, the email came from Kurt, he highlighted impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas, he kind of brought it down to the neighborhood level, I mean, no, he didn't. In our current bylaw, it's in the neighborhood visual character, and I just wanna make sure we're not losing that.
I think a view shed is always kind of a borrowed view, because if you're looking over... A town, say, if you're standing up at the top of Powderhouse Hill in the Powderhouse, and you're looking towards the harbor, that is a view shed and a scenic view.
Neighborhood character is number four, is number five right now.
Yeah, I think we've got neighborhood character addressed in other ways.
Neighborhood, you have, and social structure.
Okay.
Okay. Sue?
Yeah, sorry, I don't know if you can see my hand. I do think that we need to be really careful about... Not being clear that we're talking about public... Views. Because if we're going to use this as criteria, and people are going to say, but what about the view from my deck? I think you're in a real, I think that you get in a lot of trouble, so I think somehow we need to, either in a definition or in the language itself, that we need to say, public views.
How about adding to the end of that for the enjoyment of the general public?
And propose scenic.
So preservation enhancement or creation of existing and proposed scenic view sheds for the enjoyment of the general public?
Sure.
Does that address your concern?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the proposed changes?
I'm sympathetic to Laura's language here, but I'm really concerned about starting to talk about view sheds without having defined them first, I think it's really incumbent to catalog them and define them as a town. Otherwise, they could arbitrarily be imposed on someone's project by one board, you know, at one point in time saying, oh, that's a view shed, I mean... I don't know how Sue, maybe Sue has some comments about this.
This is a, sorry. Go ahead, Gray, I interrupted you, anything else?
We've never tried to articulate views or view sheds or view corridors in town, and if we start using the language loosely, it could be an encumbrance to people unnecessarily.
All right, this isn't a specific criteria, it's a consideration. So, special features set forth in the bylaw, the determination shall include consideration of the following. Social economic community needs, traffic, adequacy of utilities, neighbor character, impacts on the natural environment, potential fiscal impacts.
Well, let me give you an example, please, on one twenty-seven near me, there were some single family homes, and people bought them and wanted to add a second story. That blocked out the view for the public from Route one twenty-seven, some of the view, towards White Beach, which is a very pretty view. But ostensibly, someone could say, no, you can't add a second story to your house, because that's a public view shed.
Can only say that if it has, if it's a special permit.
Well, they needed one because of the, the nonconforming use, the lots were, it's part of District E, and they were single, well, single acre instead of two, they were caught up in that trap.
I still think that it's, when you think about the LCD considerations, that this is something we've heard over and over.
What do you mean by that?
The view sheds along, from one, on one twenty-eight, the view, the view corridor of the treed line around one twenty-eight, so...
I think that we should catalog what we consider, there's nothing wrong in doing it, it doesn't hurt the town, we should, somebody should somehow start to take a map out and define where these are.
Okay.
I respond to that quickly, yeah, I think that a view shed is not necessarily a static thing, a project can even create a view shed. You can clear a land and make a view shed, you can close land in, so... Like a lot of the natural environment, it's not necessarily a static thing that's gonna be unchanging, and so I think putting in the consideration for any project... Is a site-specific exercise.
Okay, any other discussion on this? I'd like to take a motion to accept the yellow changes in their entirety. Do I have a second?
Oh, just, sorry.
Let's take a second. Laura?
Yes, second.
Okay, additional comments?
I was just gonna say, they're just not agencies, the very last referral to staff members of these agencies, I think, I want to say departments or boards or committees, whatever they're referring to, I noticed that yesterday, sorry. Departments, yeah.
Great, okay, I think that's, anybody have a problem with that? Okay, great, any other discussion? Gary, I think we've heard your concern, but I think we're ready to vote, Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I vote yes, okay, great, thanks. Mark Bobrowski had some procedural edits that I'm gonna consider to be administrative, unless anybody has a problem, he said... I sent this email to all of you, it was just, there were picky things, but probably important, sixteen, twelve point six point three, he said that this was based on case law, so... I will do that unless there are objections. Okay. So... I'd like to, I guess, does this feel very awkward to have these motions or just move through them or not? What do you guys think, should we try to mo, or should we just indicate that our consensus now is that section twelve with these changes is okay, we'll vote a final version on Monday?
Well, some of us aren't gonna be here on Monday, so we should vote as much as possible tonight.
Okay, so, I vote to, motion to advance the amended draft of article five, section twelve, to final warrant and associated motions. Second?
Second.
All in favor? I mean, can't do that, roll call, Ron?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, so we've done that one, we've done...
Motion carries six zero, Sharon.
Thank you. Six, we did twelve, okay. No, I remember section.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but twelve point six point three, the, the, the language that Mitch Bobrowski has proposed is not at all what's in twelve point six point three. Which talks about the planning board serving as the approval authority for site plan review. So, he's either putting it, 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 I don't know why it says zoning board of appeals, ours says site plan review, I can't imagine that it's required.
I think he wants it to be the planning board, I mean, I think we want it to be the planning board, right?
Yeah, so I don't, I just don't know if it will... Yes.
Yeah, so we need to...
If that's the, if that's the only error, yes. I could confirm it with him.
Confirm that.
Couldn't get to it fast enough while you were...
Yep, okay, so, we're gonna confirm that.
It's in a couple places.
We can fix that Monday if we have to.
Yep. Okay, so any objections to that change? Okay, great, thanks. Okay. Okay, seven, article seven, Mark Ruski... I use red to delete things. I believe we agreed on these last night, but I just wanted to double check. And I was a little brain dead by the time last night was over, so... The, and I have a couple other sections, a couple other changes to section seven, so... Stay tuned here, so I would like a motion to strike the following shown in red from the May thirteenth version of article seven for nonconforming use.
There, excuse me.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't read the red, could you either just enlarge it or speak it, thank you.
Sorry.
A little more. Or, yeah, make it a different color. Thank you.
I was trying not to use yellow because I didn't...
Yeah, I get it. Blue or green.
No, that's not good.
Oh, that's worse, unless you change the text color, Carrie.
The text color is gonna be fixed.
Oh my god, sorry.
It was better before. I may have missed some of this discussion yesterday, because I lost image and I lost signal off and on. I thought we were headed in the direction of allowing the zoning board of appeals, the, the... The power to... Allow an abandoned use.
Yeah, I think Sarah Melish made that point.
By special permit, it was, I thought that was going to be... By special permit, it was, I thought that was going to be allowed, you're saying it's deleted?
Well, this is, we had a discussion, I can't quite, it was unclear to me where we ended up on this.
Gary, I think, this is a different, this is different from what you're talking about. This isn't a, um.
This is abandonment.
I think what Gary's talking about is, um.
No, this is within the, this is within the nonconforming, it's abandonment of nonconforming. I thought we also wanted to be able to allow them to reestablish a nonconforming use.
Yeah, this is what I'm talking about. Like, I mean, we don't have many good examples of it, but a gas station abandoned for over two years, can they open it up again as a gas station only by special permit? Instead of absolutely not.
So I think we highlighted this because it was discussed last night. I think that's where we are, we didn't, I'm not sure we resolved it.
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of giving the ZBA that power instead of an absolute prohibition. Um, and they would be, have to be judicious about what their decision would be, that's all.
Okay.
Um, I'm fine with that too personally, I think leaving it in is okay, but this is a public, this was a public comment. Issue.
I still kind of think we're, we're talking about two different things. I, I, I think the public issue was, um, was the, um, allowed going from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use.
That was another issue. These are, you're right, that, that's something different that, and we'll get to that in a minute. Um, but this is, uh,
Mark Bobrowski did give us some advice on this.
Yeah, he said we should say.
He gave us the example of a beloved general store on a corner. It goes bankrupt, it waits a couple of years. We get a new person trying to make a go of it and, you know, everybody wants the general store to, to be coming back in, but, um, the use is nonconforming. So giving the town the flexibility to permit it if it is not detrimental and is beneficial.
I highlighted it because it came up in the public comment.
Yeah.
Do I have any motion to change it or shall we leave it as is? Um, if I hear nothing, I will, we will change it, we will leave it as is. Leave it, okay. All right, um, and then we need to strike the, just the stray voltage here. He said, um, this was a Helene comment, actually. So his original was any nonconforming structure governed by Section seven point five shall be reconstructed after catastrophe. So the, the, the highlighted parts was a question from Helene. And I just didn't see it. So I think we, uh, strike it from the version of the, I highlight it because it's in your, uh, paper copy here. So, um.
So do I understand this correctly, that it's, you want to, that Helene or someone suggesting we remove what's in gray? Because if, if there's a catastrophe and it's not conforming, you shouldn't be prohibited from rebuilding it.
Correct. Helene had suggested adding in other than nonconforming, single or family, two-family dwelling. And, and Mark Bobrowski suggested just striking that, so.
If you, the way it's written here, the way I understand it, the way it's written here, if you have an, if you have a, oh wait.
Anything but a family, one or two family dwelling may be reconstructed. This is saying that if you have a dwelling, you may not reconstruct it.
Right, right.
I think we should stick with Mark Bobrowski's advice here.
I agree.
I think Helene was confused.
Yep, so that's why, I just wanted to highlight that. So we will delete these, uh, these.
Delete that clause.
Delete that clause.
So, if a catastrophe happens and it's a nonconforming structure, you're stuck. You can't, you have to rebuild it to conform with zoning.
No, any non.
You can rebuild it, you can rebuild it.
Rebuild it.
In accordance with the following provisions, whatever those are.
Yeah, there's a whole, it's got to be within two years and there's a whole bunch of stuff about it. It may mention.
So it is, it's, it is giving permission to rebuild.
Right.
Yeah, you just have to stay on the same footprint.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so I, um, so do I have a mo, um, well, let's take these all at once. Um, the next is, I don't know whose these were, I thought they were, uh, Laura's, but maybe not. Um, let me make it a little bigger. Um, to add the following language in yellow to the Section seven point two nonconforming uses. It was a little bit of an effort to, uh, to, um, understand what detrimental me, it meant. Did this come from you, Laura?
No, it came from me.
Oh, good.
It did not, I think it's, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
I thought I had a merge of the two. All right, Chris, go for it.
So this was in response to a lot of comments at the public hearing about, uh, the vagueness of the word det, less detrimental, how could you measure it? And, uh, so Mark Bobrowski answered, I thought, very eloquently and said, well, you'd look at parking and you'd look at traffic and you'd look at the neighborhood context and make a determination. So I figured, why don't we just say that?
Yeah.
And at least give the Board of Appeals some guidance, what, what detrimental is all about.
And Sex, six point three are all the, uh, performance standards for special permit.
Not highlight the, any one in particular, should we just say, shall consider the performance standards as applicable in six point three?
That's what I was gonna suggest too, I don't want to infer that we're highlighting some but not others.
Right.
I think that makes sense.
Well, um, I'd like to say I'm opposed to this because you're trying, you're sort of duplicating what the job is of the special permit granting authority. And there already are, there is a bunch of language and criteria in granting a special permit. We shouldn't redundantly mention two or three items as if they might forget to notice that they should be considering these things. And this is maybe going one step too far to placate people who may not understand the special permit granting process, because this is exactly what you do consider. You consider other things also. So I think.
That's what we just said.
You're absolutely right, Gary, but we're not going to get the votes otherwise.
Right. This is about, this is about making it understandable to and palatable perhaps to the voters.
But I, I, I'm just stating that I disagree with that, I don't support it, and it is the very nature of the special permit criteria that we already have elsewhere in the bylaw.
Gary, that's what this is referring to, I think you missed. It's just referring back to that to say, look at this criteria to see if it's detrimental or less.
But it's, it's sort of being redundant, like we found a lot of redundancies in the bylaws. Oh, don't forget about a parking, don't forget about traffic. Well, they already know to consider it.
That's what we're suggesting, Gary, to simplify, just refer back to special permit criteria. Are you okay with that? I think it's just a cross-reference.
What do you, what do you, are you taking?
Delete all, just what Sarah's doing now, delete all that and standards six point three. Or maybe just take off that are appropriate.
Those are all listed in six point three.
Yeah. So instead of listing some, we just.
Just say six point three, yeah, I agree.
But if you need to confirm it, you have to adhere to six point three, correct?
No, no, Gary, this is different. This is in a determination that is less detrimental to the neigh, to the neighborhood.
Well, it's a special permit.
Yeah, they have to do it anyway, but this is a special case.
Yeah, I think it helps us make the case for this provision, for sure. So I'm in favor of it. Um, okay, um, we've heard that Gary is, uh, Gary, do you want to take these separately now that you, or, well, let's take the last one for Section Seven, and I'd like to try to both of them all go together. Add additional permissible change under seven point five point one, who's, is this yours?
This is Sarah Melish.
Sarah.
Sarah Melish, yeah.
So seven point five point one is permissible changes. The following circumstances shall not be deemed to increase the nonconformity nature of said structure and a building permit may be issued. So this is the de minimis, so this sort of visa, insufficient area, insufficient frontage and cover, uh, encroachment, and she's suggesting coverage of a lot and impervial surface. I'm not sure I agree with that. She's saying if you're increasing the, the.
No, as long as you're not increasing it. In other words, if you want to put a dormer on a house.
Right.
There was a lot by more than the allowed amount in the district.
It, it means if the, if the, if there's too much impervious covered by the lot, so it's nonconforming as of today.
Oh, right, right, okay.
They can proceed as long as they don't increase that nonconformity, and that's reasonable.
Yep, okay.
But the, as it's written, it doesn't make any sense to me.
It, it seems clear. Um, they're saying alteration to a structure that exceeds the coverage limits, so it's nonconforming on that level.
So long as the coverage is not increased.
Exactly, so as long as you don't increase the building footprint. Or impervious surfaces.
This is how they're written with a period.
It, it does make sense.
Uh, and they all start with alteration.
I don't know why she's asking for this, because it's a matter of practice that they, they deal with things this way. As long as you don't increase the nonconformity, they tend to say.
Sarah, I think it's all just right below that, if you start with alteration, get rid of everything before that.
Yeah, sorry.
I think the, and, well, she, she needs a heading, and so instead of encroachment, it would say lot coverage and then get rid of all.
Yeah, lot coverage.
I think you got it.
Excessive lot coverage, I guess, right?
That exceeds the coverage limit.
Well, it's gotta be, it's gotta be then the same the way the others are written also.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Identify the deficiency, insufficient area, insufficient frontage, encroachment, so it needs to be excessive lot coverage or something like that. It's not just lot coverage, it's.
I think it's probably impervious.
Impervious, um, exceeds impervious lot coverage or something, Sue, I'm not sure how to say it.
Yeah, they, they don't use a verb in all the other ones, so.
I think it's. I think that's fine. Don't you?
Well, it's, it's slightly different just in the frame, in the format of what.
No, insufficient frontage is one, insufficient frontage, so. Uh.
Excessive lot coverage. There we go.
Okay. All right, so we have, uh, I think those are the, are there any other changes, proposed changes to Section Seven? We have this little.
I, sorry, my hands.
Go ahead.
With that, um, number four motion, because at least the way it's worded, somebody could come in with a, um, you know, the impervious surface above what's allowed in the district. And I guess what would, sorry, I'm not talking about tonight. What would prevent somebody, because all this is saying, as long as the coverage is not increased. So what people do is they put pavers or crushed gravel or whatever else, right? So they, they could potentially increase their, um, house size and then replace the driveway with something that's quote more pervious, and so their actual lot coverage has not changed.
Yeah.
For impervious.
That's true, and it's a standard practice in the zoning board of appeals of reviewing things. They, they scrutinize it and they add it up.
So I, I don't agree with that, because I think, you know, you, um, and, and this is, but, um, I think that.
Well, you just don't want buildings to be bigger? I mean, it's about impervious soil, it's not about, um, building size. People can make their buildings bigger if they want to.
Gary, excuse me, I am speaking.
Yeah.
And do not put words in my mouth if I don't want bigger buildings, enough of this.
But what did you just say?
Uh, Gary, stop.
Gary. I am speaking.
One person at a time.
She's got a, I have a point I hadn't thought about, so go for it, go ahead, Mary.
So again, my concern is that the way this is currently worded is people could rejigger what their impervious surface coverage is and actually increase the size of a building or increase the size of, um, you know, a drive or whatever it may be and lessen the other thing. So I think it's, um, it's not clear, I think I know what her intent is, but I don't think this is clear.
I have to agree with that.
Yep. So let's start with.
Clear.
Well, and before we even try to clarify, let's ask, do we want to include a, um, circumstance around lot coverage among the four, among the, um, in addition to the three that are currently listed there? Because if we don't, then there's no sense wordsmithing it. So what's our thinking about whether we even want to add a fourth criteria? Let's start with that, now we can figure out how to word it. Does that make sense? So Mary, I think you're proposing that we would not add the fourth criteria around lot coverage. Am I hearing you correctly?
I would propose that unless it was clear that it was not in, increasing, um, lot coverage with, um, any surface, really, I guess.
So, so you're saying that what's happening sometimes is you could add a porch and take and make your gravel pave, uh, peystone.
Right.
Your driveway. Which I guess if you're caring about water imper, uh, impermeability, that's nothing. If you, if you put your blinders onto everything else and you're just looking at lot coverage, that's okay, maybe. On the, on the math front, okay, Laura, go ahead.
I'm a little confused about whether lot coverage, so lot coverage can be anything that's making impervious surface. It doesn't have to do with the size of the building, because I'm not quite sure why I'm feeling this, but I'm, I feel like this is kind of a loophole that's letting coverage of the lot that's already too big continue to grow bigger. So making an existing use worse. It seems, it seems like it would be allowing a detrimental, um, condition. But, so if we're gonna include it, I think we gotta parse it out more. I'd be in favor of excluding it at the moment unless we come up with a definition that is not detrimental.
Yeah, I, I'm excited, I'm inclined to exclude it even. Um, Chris, do you have an opinion?
Um, well, this was not my idea, this is Sarah Melish's, but I can see her point. If, you know, if you're gonna replace, let's say you have, uh, a porch that you want to take off and replace it with a new porch, maybe smaller. This wouldn't, currently you couldn't do it, you couldn't get the special permit to, to do it because you're a nonconforming lot. So I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm suggesting is that as long, as long as the total amount of impervious surface doesn't change, why can't you allow someone to manipulate the impervious surfaces within the lot?
Um, Sue?
So I think, so these are, we need to remember, these are, um, things that we're basically saying, we're not going to consider these detrimental if.
Right.
It's one of these, so, Chris, I think they can get a, they can get a special permit. This is saying you won't need a special permit if you want. But what I wanted to say is, so there are, what's listed currently are, are all things that make a lot or a building, um, nonconforming. Um, lot coverage can make a building nonconforming. So I think the intent is to take all the things that make a lot nonconforming and then say, as long as we're, as long as the change is not, um, more detrimental, is not, and is not increasing the nonconformity, in this case, the nonconformity is the lot coverage, um, then it should be able to do that. So I think the language isn't maybe where it should be, but I would ask Mark if he could create the appropriate language. But I do think she's trying to be consistent in saying any of these things that are nonconforming, there should be a, a baseline to say, well, if you're changing this, but you're not changing a nonconformity or making any other additional nonconformity, which is part of it, then it should be allowed. So I think, I think the intent is right, I think language might need to come from someone else. And I don't feel super strongly.
I mean, it could be as simple as that the, the footprint doesn't, the footprint of the, the structure doesn't increase. increase. Right? I mean, I I.
I think that's making it all about the the footprint, and there are other things like height, or I I I think it's more nuanced than that. Just, that's just my opinion, but.
Well, the footprint is what's going to be the the lot coverage, so that's why I was thinking of that.
Except, Mary, I think it includes the driveway and other surfaces too, so it could be that you're expanding.
Both, yeah.
Footprint or the, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, it it doesn't read, read.
I agree, it doesn't read right. Maybe, I I like Sue's suggestion of asking Mark Bobrowski, I do wonder if essentially, this is making a kind of a grandfathered use acceptable for, you know, if our stormwater regulations change at some point, and when you go to pull a permit, you need to have um need to retain more stormwater or whatever it might be, then this could be at odds with that, but maybe that's a bridge we cross at the time. Or maybe that they'll just, you know, I guess everything will be subject to those stormwater regulations. So I don't know how that would play against this, but. Maybe asking Mark Bobrowski.
No, I think, yeah, I think what's missing is that in the other language, it says um, which complies with all other current setback yard building coverage and building height requirements. And this is just missing that. So if you look closely at it, it says alteration to a structure to sort of within, and then add the same thing that's in all of the others, which is which complies with all other current setback yard building coverage and building height requirements. So it's not a, it's not a free for all. Um, do you need that language again? Sarah?
Yeah, that, um. How are all the requirements all?
Which which complies with all current setback yard building coverage and building height requirements. Although I.
Building coverage, you're gonna leave out building coverage.
Right, yeah, I think you would leave that out because that's what we're talking about. And I guess, and I would still suggest we ask Mark, Mark's blessing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mary, does that make sense?
Yep.
I still don't agree with it.
Yeah, okay. Um.
Yeah, can we pass on making a motion on this one?
Yeah, let's pass on seven um, on that one um. We'll pass on this one. I want to get some clarity on these that we, I think this one's administrative. I'm not going to worry about that one. Uh, can I just get a, because I know Gary wants to vote against this one, so let's um, just take a motion on this. Uh, are there any other changes on seven that we should think about? That anybody had at this moment? Okay, um, I'll take a motion to add the following language shown in yellow to the seven point two nonconforming uses. Chris?
Do you want a second or make the motion?
I want you to make a motion.
I'll make them, I'll make.
Can I have a second, Ron?
Second.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? Uh, Chris?
Sarah?
Sarah?
Yeah. Are you referring to everything in yellow right now?
Just adding what the, what's just in yellow uh, in this section here.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, well, I'll, in fact, I'll move this to a separate sheet, separate.
Do you want to vote the administrative stuff on the other?
Do I have consensus on the administrative? I think that's. Any objections to the administrative stuff? No, okay.
Why don't we, can we include that?
Include that too, that's fine. Thank you. Um.
I I'll amend the motion to include.
Okay.
The administrative changes.
Okay.
So Sharon, that's seven point seven and six seven.
Seven point seven and seven point two. Um, uh, Chris? Yes or no?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Uh, Ron?
Yes.
Um, Gary?
No.
Okay, um, Mary?
Yes.
Uh, and I vote yes. Okay, great, and we're gonna.
This is six.
Thank you. Thank you, um, wait on this, um. Okay, save that, um, okay, um. Oh, this is my last slide, um. So it seems to me that we have, we we um stake them one at a time, um. Comments on the residential conservation cluster. Now, can I just want to clarify, um, I think, um, I I don't want to put words in your mouth, uh, Mary, but um, I want to clarify what we're doing here. We're at, we're moving these forward to town meeting. Um, this is, you will have a chance on um, Monday to vote whether we're going to recommend, whether you want to recommend the article or not. Because I recognize that not, these three may not have, um, I think all the rest of them probably have unanimous support or near unanimous support, but we'll have to vote each, to recommend each article separately. So if you don't recommend the article, what you, we're now just voting to get it to the finish, the near finish line. Does that make sense? Not necessarily to recommend it.
Oh, yeah, you, oh, absolutely, and um, but I do have comments on the
Great.
Language.
Okay, now, go for it. Which one do I start with?
Uh, the residential conservation cluster.
Okay.
Um. Nine point two point one three. It says maintain the town's traditional character and land use pattern in which small villages contrast with open land. I don't really know how that applies to Manchester. I mean, we don't have villages.
Or open land much.
But, you know, I mean, nothing drastic, but I it doesn't, it seemed like maybe it was plucked from.
From somebody else, yeah.
Sure was.
I I wouldn't mind changing that, but I don't, you know, um. The other one was.
Well, can we, let's just um, think about how we, either whether we recommend striking it or changing it since we're, since we're all looking at it. Do you have a recommendation? Do you want to strike it, or do you want to just? I agree with you, it's not that appropriate.
Um, I mean, I'm fine, you know, obviously ma- maintain the town's traditional character and land use pattern, but yeah, the the.
Can we just leave it after, strike it after ant land use pattern?
Sorry, could you read the number again?
Uh, yeah, it's line fourteen.
Nine point two point one.
Uh, line fourteen.
Uh, I would strike after land use pattern.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with that. I think that's fine.
Okay.
Um, actually, I'm trying to square numbering, so nine point two point nine. Maybe I was just stapled wrong, actually.
Do you guys have this in your packets? I do not.
Yeah.
I cannot have nine, ten, or one.
Oh.
I, I do, they're back to back.
They're back to back, I see, okay.
Sorry.
You're right.
Um, I'm sorry, it's still under nine point two point one. It's number thirteen. Um, I brought this up before because I thought it was weird that it was added in, but um, so it says encourage more sensitive reuse of qualifying sites within the RD one, RD two, and G districts. Why isn't it saying all districts?
And don't have LCD, right?
Yeah, we can, we could say all did, well, we can say all districts.
But that, that would include the LCD, all residential districts.
About all residential districts.
Okay, line number, sorry, I was doing something else.
Um, thirty three.
Oh, thirty three.
Yeah.
And then I think you would need to take out this statement in these more populated districts. So just say, so that redevelopment is integrated with surrounding uses and promote.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I've um, done that on paper on those lines thirty three and thirty four.
That's it for the RCC.
Okay, great, good reading, thank you. Um, okay, so which, what is that? That's nine.
What about ten?
Let me just, before we, uh, let's finish on this one. This is the RCC. Um, okay, let's um uh, take a motion, move this one forward. Is that a motion, Ron?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move Article nine forward.
Okay.
Except language is discussed.
amended, um, okay.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Um, Gary?
What?
Vote.
Vote.
Oh. Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you, um. Laura?
Yeah.
Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes, so this will be one of the slides we put up in town meeting, the table.
Well, let's talk.
Is that?
I don't want to get.
I I don't want to jump the gun, but I mean, this is one of them, I assume.
Yes, I think so. I think I disagree with, we could talk about this longer.
Okay, we.
I'm not trying to agree with Alan about that.
Okay, all right, all right.
But uh, okay, let's um, I do want to talk. Well, let's get through the rest of this, um, okay, uh, senior housing.
So I had a comment.
Yep.
Um. So it went in the article description to see if the town will vote, blah, 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 um, it doesn't list District E.
Oh.
Good catch.
Come on, I had all, uh, right, so, um, so it does, let me, um.
On your presentation, you had all, but.
Oh, yeah, it always, we, I think we intended it to be all. Um. So let's, is there any thoughts about um not including any particular districts? And I'm gonna um, so E was an a typographical error. Um, I would like to suggest that we from my perspective, I think we should hold unlimited commercial district for I can see the um, merits of moving senior housing forward for the LCD, but we have just gone to town meeting last, um, whenever that was, this month, early, like, early, like, last month, and said that there wasn't residential um, uses in the LCD. We have this study that Chris and that Sue is working on with MAPC about guidelines for housing. And although some of senior housing um might be commercial in nature, it is residential. Um, and I think we haven't fully thought through what this bylaw really means in scale. Um, so I'm not opposed to having it in the LCD, and it means we gotta like hash it through again with another zoning change. But um, it's my opinion that maybe we should hold on the LCD for the senior housing. I'm curious what other people think, and if I'm in, if I'm in a minority, then I'm. Uh, yes, um, Mary, go ahead.
So I agree with that. It, we don't, LCD does not have housing, um. I would also say that I I don't think we've thought about all of the ramifications of this within residential areas. Um, if it's assisted living, that needs, you know, ambulances in and out, and ramps and parking and um various different things, so you know seeing, you you know, ambulances come and go in in District D, for example, or the general district, um. You know, my dad was in assisted living, so I I, you know. You need a lot of space for these things, you know, you need the right turnarounds, you need space for, you know, the fire trucks to be and the ambulances, and so I I just don't know that we've thought about this enough.
Well, I think it would be asked by special permit. I'm less worried about that piece, because I think that those things would have to be considered based on the size and scale of um the proposal. My concern is more, is sort of political at this moment, um, about getting these things past being true to what we're saying and being thoughtful, so that's, that's my, not to debate you, uh, Laura, go ahead.
Yeah, so you're saying it's a question of timing, because it could be that that a senior housing i- is essentially a campus and that that scale of use, which can still be quite modest and residential scale and all, you know, contextual and all that good stuff and tucked in the woods, but um may require a certain, you know, area of land to be able to to.
Oh, certainly, a big.
So. Yeah, so that's the goal of our master plan, to provide it. I I wouldn't want to shut the door on this discussion, so I think you're just recommending to hold it and revisit it later. Is that right, Sarah?
Yeah, that's sort of my thought is that if we don't, um that I think actually for the reasons that Mary has described, that I'm whole, I think we should, I I'm just wondering if we should hold on it for the LCD. Uh, I think, um, so I'm I may be in a minority. Ron, go ahead.
A couple of points on Mary on the adequate, um, I I agree, it could be a political football here on on the adequacy. There is uh, on the numbers eleven and twelve, uh, you know, adequate circulation, adequate parking, public safety, emergency, it's kind of been prescribed already, um, I think in the uh what is it, nine point uh three point four dimensional requirements. Um, but I do agree that um, it's probably not the right time to uh, propose housing up there when we just proposed the commercial use. Um, and and to revisit it, I don't know, to to point it out to put housing up there. I don't know if it's ever going to be a time to uh, put housing up there, but I agree politically, it's probably not the right time.
Uh, Chris?
Well, I, you know, I couldn't disagree more. I think this is exactly the time to do it, and I, the LCD is much bigger than just the part we're talking about. There's a whole part over on uh, Pine Street near Gordon College, which would be a great place for some kind of a, like campus facility. Maybe even affiliated with Gordon College, or maybe that's something they're even talking about doing, I don't know. But it is a special permit. Um, and I, if we don't do it now, when the heck are we going to do it?
Um, Sue?
Oh, thanks, I thought I was muted. I've just been quiet, imagine that. Um, I I do want to, I just want to point out that this was a use that was the most um, highly um, uh, supported in the, throughout the master planning process, and specifically for the LCD. When we talk about assisted living and all that, so I don't think that people have forgotten um, the needs of that community and the appropriateness of um, that large open space. Uh, again, I just think it's, I I know people will see one thing and want that that one thing and think it's a silver bullet, but there's no guarantee that um, self signaling will come through, and I would I I agree with Chris, I think that, I know I know that that some people will object to anything up there, but I I do think that this is a commercial use and it um, was highly, highly supported um, in the master planning process.
Um, Ron?
I've, um, like I've said, my, you were asking me.
Oh, you have your hand up again.
I'm sorry.
Um, okay, I was just gonna say, um, I um, I understand Chris's point. Have making frequent taps to assisted living facilities these days, um. There's the, what we think of as kind of a nursing home or a contained building, but many of these places have really have independent housing units. They have um, townhouse style um, units. And that's the piece that I'm concerned about uh, at this moment. That's the piece that I think is. I, I am not, I mean, it just doesn't fit with my view of what should happen. I'm not a fan of the, of the mixed use in the LCD. And the residential, you know, independent living townhouse type units in the LCD. So I guess I'm twofold, to be honest, is I'm not sure that I think it's the right, that piece of senior housing is right for the LCD. And then I'm, I'm perhaps hiding behind a timing argument that says we haven't fully thought it through. And so that's my, that's my point. Gary, you haven't said anything on this.
Um, could it easily be amended at town meeting to just remove that use from the LCD if it's, there seems to be opposition? I assume the answer is yes. I would, I would agree with, with Chris. And it is a commercial type of use. I would, I would feel sad if, if it was there by itself. But if some developer understands how they function these facilities and feels that he could build one that would be welcoming and successful, I mean, let them propose something. It would be kind of sad to have them isolated up there, but I, I say we should allow the use. It does reflect the master plan. And worse comes to worse, we could just take that part of it out.
Okay. Anybody else have any new thoughts? Sharon?
This is Mary. I think my, I agree with you, Sarah, and my issue with this is, is the senior housing bucket is a big bucket. So it's assisted living, which is more commercial, it's, you know, senior care, which is more commercial. To your point, you know, senior housing can be, though we've created it to be somewhat small units, that could be, you know, it could still be luxury two bedroom units that sell for, you know, whatever they sell for. So that's the housing component, and we don't allow, currently allow housing in the LCD, so. I don't even know if this, this bylaw would fly worded to let it in the LCD because I think we only let commercial. So we're saying two things in two different bylaws. And again, if it was just saying we allowed assisted living in the LCD, I could understand that, but this is housing.
Okay, I think everybody, oh, Laura, we haven't heard from you.
We did hear from me early on. I, my mother lives in one of these two. In fact, today is her 96th birthday, so happy birthday, mom. She, you know, these places provide a continuum of care. You may start off in independent living and then need to move to assisted or dementia cares, you know. That's just happened in my own family. So I wouldn't want to preclude the mix that supports aging, aging on one campus. And I think this, you know, I, I'm hearing what Sue and Chris and Gary are saying. This is a use that's highly desired, and it can be quite contextual if we need to provide more controls around it. One of those be design standards or what have you. Maybe we should be doing that, but I, I wouldn't want to preclude the use. I think it's, it's really needed, and it can be the right place for a campus.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that we could also end up with a proposal that only has one part of the use. And that's just the.
Well, we turned it down. We turned it down.
Or can we, can we, can we make that a performance standard, sort of, you know, the continuum of care in our, in our standard and modify it that way?
I think we have the right to do whatever we want with a special permit.
So that we don't wait for the special permit, but we put it in, into the regs now.
I think that, I think that could be done because I agree, and I don't think anyone wants to see standalone senior housing if it's not, you know, not contextual. That's not where we would put our seniors unless there was some continuing type care of, you know, unless it was a community, so.
Right, but right now, this, as I read this, we could have a bunch of townhouses that have fifty five plus.
We do have definitions, don't we? Can we, can we use those definitions to help us shape this section?
But it's only by special permit, and the planning board is a special permit granting authority, so. I think it could be strengthened with some, some language regarding the, you know, the mix, but I would hate to see us throw the baby out with the wash on this one. That's it for me. I'm not a voter.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest tabling that discussion right now because I'm not prepared to make a significant, important change unless anybody wants to make a motion. I think we have corrected the typo in E. I may make a suggestion for something at the next meeting, but I'm not prepared to do that tonight. So I might. Does anybody want to make a motion to advance senior housing as written? Or any other motions on this, or do we want to wait till Monday on this one?
Why don't we wait till Monday? I'd be happy to work with anybody on.
Okay. Great. I'll work with.
I'm happy to work with you, Chris.
Will you take some, some input?
Yeah. Interesting, the LCD. I, I think it's fine. Okay. Okay, the last one is, well, we have general bylaws too. I really want to be done by eight thirty, but we spent a lot of time on ADUs last night. I'm hoping we can have a motion to advance the bylaws as amended last night.
Seconded.
Any other discussion? Sarah.
Gary, you didn't know how, what we did to it. You were away.
All right, Gary, I appreciate that you don't want me to do this, and I'm not gonna make a, a hard case, but I just want to bring to people's attention, I mean, in case they haven't considered it, that by limiting the number of bedrooms to two in a, in a building that can be as large as twelve hundred square feet effectively eliminates families with more than one child. I have had numerous calls from single parents with multiple, with two children. Both the calls are that I, that recall of different, of different sex, but two bedrooms effectively is not, eliminates them from this type of housing, which is a more, a less costly housing and an option for people that may not have a means for purchase or of a large, you know, renting a large house. So I just want to point out that I think it's a bit discriminatory to, to families. And I just hope that you would consider that.
Okay, Mary, you had your hand up.
So just looking back to what was brought up last night, so has the, it was asked that the references to affordable language be struck. Has that happened?
There was, there is no affordable language in the ADU. Somebody did a search for that.
Okay, so has it been struck elsewhere?
I don't believe it was in, oh, maybe it was low in, lower, less, more affordable, correct?
Less expensive.
Less expensive.
Where did we fall on the, somebody had brought up occupancy limit. Did we do anything with that?
We said the building code, building code satisfied that. That came up.
And then did we decide not to put anything with ADUs and curb cuts? I forget.
I think we, Laura has a proposal under the general bylaws.
Yeah, Mary, I'm gonna bring something when we get to that section. I hope we'll address those concerns.
Okay, any other comments? Laura, did you have another comment?
Yeah, in response to Sue, I believe that in, we, we did have that discussion with Mark Bobrowski last night, and it was my recollection that we struck the clause that said two bedrooms. We, we capped at one, at twelve hundred square feet, and we did not.
We kept it, we struck two bedrooms for the max. We left it in what's line number fifty three and fifty four. The ADO shall not be larger than nine hundred square feet of living area nor more than two bedrooms.
I think for nine hundred square feet, why not just strike the two bedrooms anyhow? I mean, it's
Doesn't matter.
virtually a studio, and let it be whatever it wants to be. Let it be flexible.
I agree with that.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I did not know that it was struck, so.
No, thank you.
I apologize for getting on that soapbox.
I, I appreciate the point, having been a single mom for a long time. I appreciate the point.
Okay, so the proposal is to move this to final consideration, striking in lines fifty three, fifty four, nor have more than two bedrooms is the only modification. Are there any other comments?
Um, where? It's, it's fairly common in ADUs to limit them to two bedrooms. I don't, I, I, I think it's important to, for people to have a certain amount of comfort factor about these, and we see how they go for a year or two before making other tweaks. So I would advocate to leave in the two bedroom limit as much as I may feel a bit differently ultimately on the big picture, but I think for now it's, it's reasonable.
And Mark Bobrowski did send us a definition.
I have it.
I don't, I don't object to it with the by right. I think what I objected to it is that you wouldn't allow it by special permit, I think.
We took it out of the special permit. I actually would like to keep it in by right. I agree with you.
Nine hundred square feet doesn't allow much, but.
So what we're doing is moving it to final consideration, the May seventeenth draft as written. Do I have a motion, Chris?
Yes, I move that we approve it as written.
Gary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mary?
Is that as written, what we have as the hard copy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, great. Okay.
Gary six.
Carrie's, okay, the last thing, and I'm trying to. Um, am I still sharing? I am not. Unfortunately, the general bylaws section was not included in our packet. And Laura had, there's some track changes, which I think can all be accepted. Laura has proposed adding. She first of all, let me just make this bigger. She notes that this existing clause would cover ADUs and other uses. So this is in the driveway entrances. This permit shall be separate in addition to any building permit or site plan review permit. I'm gonna hide that comment. The comment. And she proposes to add driveway shall be designed to maximize visibility in all directions and to minimize the flow of water into the public way and adjacent.
That was just the addition of an and to clarify that sentence, the real substantive below.
Right, to avoid reduction of on-street parking, to maintain accessible cross slopes in public sidewalks, and to minimize vehicle pedestrian contracts. Residential uses are encouraged to utilize only one drive entrance with two entrances being the maximum allowable and requiring planning board special, planning board review. I think that's a great addition.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. So are there any other comments? Any other comments on this proposed? Can everybody see that?
Where did they? Where did the? I'm sure it's there. I just can't see it. There shall normally be not more than one driveway.
Yeah, maybe I can talk this through. So, so Mary, what, where, where Sarah's cursor is, is what we had before. So residential uses are encouraged to utilize only one driveway entrances. And then before we'd said two being the max allowable. So what I've done is say, if you're gonna have two, that's gonna go, that's gonna bump you to the next paragraph, which is planning board special review. So DPW is not going to decide that, but it's going to come back to planning board if you want more than one entrance. And then effectively, I've added a purpose statement here, which is why we want the one entrance to be the, the default, to avoid reduction in on-street parking, to maintain accessible cross slopes on public sidewalks. So every time a driveway crosses a sidewalk, you get these slopes that are no longer accessible by MAB. And to minimize vehicle pedestrian conflicts that occur when a vehicle crosses a pedestrian way. What I was doing in the highlight before was just simply saying that it's already requiring this is a separate review to any building permit. So an ADU and every other permit requirement or site plan review requirement would also require separately.
This is already there.
This is already there. I'm just calling it out.
So if, so if, you know, somebody has a single driveway and then they want to make a circular driveway, they would come to the planning board.
That's right.
Okay.
And make a case for why that would be, and then we'd be saying, we think it's, we think you shouldn't, but make your case for it in a special permit process.
Laura, can I, can we take out the word review after planning board and say approval?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
And do we want to add some wiggle room on the width? You know, unless, you know, someone wants to go wider, they can come before us. I mean, there may be a reason.
They can do that anyway, I think.
Okay, it says no more than twelve feet wide, so I mean, maybe somebody with a.
I think it says nine compliant driveways have to come to the planning board.
Okay.
So actually, Ron, that, that raises a question for me because under this B, it says all new and relocated.
Sorry, I just deleted something. Sorry. Luckily, I have everything in two places.
Did you? Again, yeah, we'll look at Mary's.
I got it. I was just trying to save it so I didn't lose it, but I didn't mean to lose something else. Okay, sorry.
I was just looking at the number B applicability, where it says all new and relocated driveway entrances. Should that also say expanded? Because if somebody's wanting to expand a driveway, they have to.
Is that up, Mary? Were you scrolling up?
That's under B applicability.
I just can't see the letters in the. All new, relocated. Yeah, all new or altered.
I was gonna, because if you're expanding, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't use, I wouldn't use alter because that just might mean paving. Not expanded, yeah, I think.
Okay.
Great, any objections? Let me just ask, because the, the general bylaws section has a bunch of track changes. Does anybody have any more comments on the general bylaws section? I need, I think it needs to be kind of tidied up before it gets voted. It's too much to just say voltage on that.
I was wondering if you could tell me where Article twelve, what it compared to in our current bylaws.
Oh, none of those exist in our current bylaws. Right? Oh, Article twelve?
Give me an Article twelve of the general bylaws.
I'm just looking at the amend general bylaws, Article two.
Article two, yeah, sorry.
Article twelve. Storage of commercial materials and vehicles.
Let me pull that up.
Are we just moving that?
I don't recall this.
It doesn't currently exist, so that's why.
Right.
So, so this gets back to the commercial vehicle, because now, you know, we're not defining it in the use table. We're not defining it in definitions, but now we're saying it's ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight. So there's that, but then I, yeah, I I guess for me, this becomes very subjective with like the storage of building and landscaping materials and equipment. I mean, I think again, it, you know, we don't have to rehash it, but that's, that could become neighbor nuisance issues very quickly and having the building inspector that again, it's subjective, so I, I, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot on this one. Because one, one person's landscaping materials is another person's.
Mary, didn't we say commercial? Because I remember talking about that one and I thought we inserted, I don't have it in front of me now, but I thought we inserted commercial landscaping and.
It does, it does say. Commercial materials.
Not in our packet, right?
The first bullet says the storage of building and landscaping materials and equipment. And then the second bullet says commercial landscaping, equipment, materials supplies. So the first one is just building and landscape materials, right? Like, so somebody could be like, I'm going to, you know, do something in my yard and get all the equipment and just store it there and then decide not to do it. But then it sits there, right?
Well, you think that's a good idea?
Do I think it's a good idea?
Yeah.
No.
So should we regulate it or let it go? Maybe, maybe we're regulating something that's not a problem.
Well, I think what, what bylaws try to prevent problems. So if we're saying that you can do it and it's subjective, then I think it does create problems.
I think it gets to when a neighbor complains, then it becomes an issue.
Yeah, and again, you know, and I'm just raising it. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be that, you know, something that one neighbor might not mind, another neighbor might, and it just becomes, you know. My view of bylaws is we're trying to avoid problems and I don't want to create problems.
Is inserting the word commercial in the first bullet address your concern, Mary? The storage of commercial building and landscaping equipment?
No, because, you know, anybody could declare something's commercial and it's.
Still subjective.
Yeah.
Unless maybe you said the commercial storage, which means then it's not the material, but it's the activity, the commercial storage of building and landscaping materials and equipment. I don't know if that's getting what you're after.
Mary, is your.
Contractors yarns.
Sorry, I was just gonna, is the objection that it's moving to the general bylaws? Or is the objection that it's not enforced by the planning board?
Neither. I just, I, I think, I was looking at this and I was like, where is this stuff coming from? Because it's not in our current bylaws, so.
Right, it came from the conversations that we had a couple of years ago with Mr. Bobrowski. It was brought up as something that we wanted to address, but it hasn't been yet put into our bylaws. So we can't take it out of our bylaws. It doesn't exist there. We can recommend that it go into the general bylaws. And if the Board of Selectmen agree, they could put it in there.
So we went around and around on this one, and I think that's important. It's not in our current bylaws. It was in draft eight, which is where I found it originally. And we decided it should go to general bylaws. So I hope we've already, we've already made that decision. And then we made, we went around and around on this question about how do we define it? And this is what we came up with. It's, and I think it, Mary is correct that it's potentially leaves some gray area, but it's better than what we have now, which is nothing. And so if there's specific language we can insert to make it better, great. But I think we, otherwise I'm, I'd be in favor of kind of moving it along.
And that's fine. My concern is we don't put any parameters around it, right? Like we don't put timeframes, we don't put size, we don't put scale, we don't put, you know, even with the, the lands, the storage of building and landscape materials, you know, for the boats, we say, okay, it's got to be five feet. This, you know, we don't say anything. So to me, it's very vague. I, I think it's going to be problematic.
Again, I think it comes up when a neighbor complains and then the building inspector has a little bit of teeth to say, hey, that's commercial stuff, get it out of here or something like that.
But we're saying it's allowed.
Well, as long as it's not visible and create a public nuisance, that's what we're allowing. It happens now all the time and I think what we're doing is actually creating some oversight over what already happens. We're not, I think it's unlikely that people are going, when they see this are going to start storing commercial material there that they wouldn't already have been doing. I think that's, so it's not like it's going to encourage people to do it.
Oh, I agree with that. I'm just saying, you know, and I, I don't have a situation like this, but I'm just saying it doesn't give an aggrieved neighbor much to stand on.
Okay. Laura?
Oh, yeah, hold on. Yeah, so I, I, it seems to me the first three bullets are describing commercial use. So I propose we put commercial in front of storage as one way to further define that. On the other hand, I do want to remind us all that we talked about hardware stores, like the Ace Hardware Store downtown. And I, and we had once had a clause in there that said, you know, excluding retail establishment or the like. So we gotta put that back.
Right.
Because we want our town hardware stores. Retail.
That would be an unfortunate.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
And then if you insert commercial ahead of storage, I hope this clarifies what we mean.
Okay, well, we may not all agree on this.
I think.
Since that this is the, maybe that not perfect, but, but certainly an improvement. I'm, it's 8:48 and I would like to stop. I had promised three nights, three planning board nights in a row is. So I'm trying to get someplace before nine myself. So if people would like to continue, I can turn it over to you, but I think I'm going to sign off.
I agree with you, Sarah.
Chris, what do you need to say?
This is on my new.
What have we, what have we got left to do?
That's it. Finalize this one and we can do that Monday and finalize a couple of things, but. If you have other comments, please send them to me. We can take them up. Editorial comments. Laura, you have a question?
Just a reminder that I cannot attend Monday's meeting and somebody else, I don't know if it was Mary or Christina. We're, we're not able to attend, Mary.
So you're a very careful reader. Please give me your editorial comments.
Yeah, and I, I may be able to attend. My husband's having surgery, so it just depends how out of it he is or not.
And, and just to confirm, we're adequately posted for a continuation of this deliberation? Or do we need to add that to the?
Needs to be added to the.
To the agenda, update the agenda.
Yeah, I hope she, she didn't post the, Sharon, you haven't posted the agenda yet, have you?
All right, I'm going to sign off.
I think she just signed off.
Oh, okay, so then.
I sent that comment, Ron, so.
Okay, so, all right, so I'd like to have a motion to continue the deliberation portion of the public hearing to Monday, May 23rd.
So moved, second.
Roll call, Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Mr. Only. And Ms. Jenny.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, thanks. On Monday's agenda, we have a land, Sue, a land purchase to approve.
Land, a land taking it. So you have a planner, a, a planning board report. There's a draft that is going to be going into the SharePoint file that explains it. So that's.
So, so this is on the warrant for our meeting, so we need to act on it on Monday. Also, Sue, what about the edits to Cornerstone Church? They're pretty minor, but have they been put in the packet?
They're de minimis and I am about to put it in the packet. I have a, a vote certificate that was prepared by Helene for that purpose. And I will, I just need to fill in the blanks, will need to fill in a few more blanks.
Okay, so we get that into the packet for the, we get that for board members.
Yeah.
Okay, and I understand we have no minutes and no correspondence, so. Okay, we've adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night. Take care.
Bye.
Bye.
Good luck.
Good luck on Monday.